Welcome to the Watsonville City Council meeting. We're glad there's so many of you here this evening. And if we could start with roll call, please.
Revantes.
Here.
Hurst.
Here.
Dutra.
Present.
Garcia. Kaufman Gomez.
Present.
Hernandez.
Here.
Bilicich.
Present, thank you. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation, God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just to let everyone know, we have our translation equipment right over here, right near the booth in the basket. Para usar los aparatos de traducir, los tenemos acá en la esquina. Los aparatos para traducir. En español obtenga un aparato de la mesa junto de la caseta de traducir. Préndelo y usa el canal cero. Cuelgárselo en el cuello con frente hacia afuera. Si no puede oír, revise que el aparato esté encendido y sin obstrucciones. Solo funciona aquí dentro de la cámara del Consilio.
Thank you. And now we will start with oral communications. First from the public. If anyone would like to address the City Council on issues not on the agenda, if you would step forward, state your name. Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Ron Sandage and I have some flowers that I'd like to share with the members of the City Council and city staff. Approximately three years ago, a group of educators and concerned people in the community got together over the idea of developing more scholarship money for high school students. And it's our concern to this day. And to that extent, we have, over that period of time, been doing fundraising. Through the good people with Snazzy Productions, we are able to bring to this community an outstanding group of musicians, Las Cafeteras. They will be presenting workshops at Pajaro Valley High School on Thursday and at Watsonville High School on Friday afternoon. Friday evening, they will present a full concert at the Mellow Center. Doors are at 7:00. Performance begins at 7:30. And I invite all the members of the City Council, the city staff, and the members of the Greater Pajaro Valley to be in attendance. Because your ticket, your entrance, your support through this benefit concert will provide a great deal of money for the scholarship fund. It's the college-bound scholarship fund. And because that auditorium holds 750 seats, if we can fill every seat, we stand to raise a considerable amount of money to benefit the students in our community. So I hope that each and every one of you, and all of you, and everybody that you know will go and get a ticket. You can do that in advance at Jansen's Music on Main Street. And otherwise, on the flyer there, and if anybody has any questions, there's ways to get in touch with us. SnazzyProductions.com, you can order tickets online or at the Ticket Hunt line by telephone, which is area code 831-479-9421. A great evening of music, folk music, presented by Las Cafeteras, and I hope to see you all there. And I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening Mayor and City Council members. I have some packets of information. My name is Lorena Ramos. I am staff to the Santa Cruz County Tobacco Education Coalition and the Tobacco Education Program. And we are here today because every year, the American Lung Association of California issues grades for all the cities and the counties in California. And the grades correspond to the policies of Smoke-Free Outdoor Air, Smoke-Free Housing, and Reducing Sale of Tobacco Products. Last week, the ALA released the grades for 2014. And on behalf of the Tobacco Education Coalition, we want to take this opportunity to congratulate the Council and the city on maintaining an average grade of B. This is due to the ongoing commitment to creating smoke-free outdoor areas and reducing youth access to tobacco. And most recently, for including electronic cigarettes into the smoking control policy. I also want to point out that the American Lung provides weights that each city can continue to work on providing smoke-free protection in their communities and, in this way, improve the grade. The packets that I've shared include the grades for all the cities and the county, including Watsonville. There's also a flyer that tells the cities or has suggestions on how to improve the grades. And there's also an article that was just published in the Sentinel that mentions Watsonville as well. Now, in addition, some youth from Friday Night Live, and also there was from Youth Now in Moabalo, unfortunately they're not here today. They want to share their appreciation for the commitment to tobacco prevention and for public health and safety in Watsonville that the City Council has shown. So I'll let them come up to the podium.
Good evening Mayor and City Council members. My name's Eddie Robles.
I'm Aaron Gexiela.
And today, along with other youth of Moabalo and Youth Now, we would like to present the certificate of appreciation to the Watsonville City Council in appreciation of the Council's commitment to tobacco-related issues that affect the health and well-being of local youth and to the reducing tobacco and nicotine disease burden in the community. This award is presented by the Santa Cruz County Tobacco Education Coalition, Santa Cruz County Friday Night Live, Youth Now, and Moabalo. Thank you.
Very much.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Jorge Rojas. Y hoy estoy aquí para... porque tengo entendido que la ciudad no permite tener cabras como mascotas domésticas. Y quería ver si se pudiera más adelante que se permita tener un cierto tipo de cabras en la ciudad, las cuales son las cabras enanas nigerianas. Estos tipos de cabras, yo las tomo como... más que de animales domésticos, como mascotas de servicio porque comen la hierba que crece en las yardas, producen leche, que puede hacer uno queso con ellas. Y hay personas que... como mi esposa que está enferma y es alérgica a la leche de vaca, y ella solo puede tomar este tipo de leche. Entonces, yo les pediría de favor que consideraran que pudiéramos tener este tipo de cabras como mascotas en las yardas y como tipo de servicio también. Gracias.
We could have a translation, please.
Good evening, I am Jorge Rojas. And I am here today because I understand that the city doesn't allow to have goats as pets. And so I wanted to see if maybe in the future, it can be allowed to have some type of goat. This would be a special goat from Nigeria. And this type of goat, I see them more than domesticated animals, I see them as pets and as service animals. They eat the weeds that grow in our backyards. They also produce milk. And we can use their milk, we can make cheese out of that. And people like my wife who are sick, she cannot drink cow milk, this is the only type of milk that she can drink. And so I would ask you if you can consider having... that we can have this type of goat in our homes and also to have them as service animals. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Mayor Bilicich and Council members. I'm Carol Heitzig, Watsonville Public Library Director. I'm here this evening to officially acknowledge, on behalf of the Friends of the Library, the remarkable event that happened yesterday. The Friends of the Library were contacted and told that the estate of Bob and Elaine Stein had given the Friends of the Library $430,000. It was a remarkable and unexpected gift. And I want you to know that the Friends and myself and the library staff are extremely grateful for this. And we are looking forward to finding a way to use the money wisely and to make sure that their gift extends far into the future with their intention being to establish and to continue the services that are provided by the Watsonville Library and the Freedom Branch. Things like this just don't happen very often in anyone's lifetime. And it's such a testament to the value that the Steins placed on the library. And we want to make sure that other people appreciate this as well. They were kind of unspoken heroes. They came to the library a lot, but they sort of slid under the radar. They just used the library and it created a real value in their lives. And anyway, I just want to acknowledge it publicly. And yes, that look of shock that you saw in my face in the Paharonian was really true. I mean, we couldn't believe it. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you for sharing that, Carol. It's a great, great thing to happen to the library and to the city. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Felicia Davidson and I'm here today along with many other parents, faculty, and community members to listen to Agenda Item Number Nine that regards Pajaro Valley High School. I would like to request that the Board discuss, if possible, moving this Agenda Item up earlier in the Agenda in order to respect the time of the families that came out today and the students who still have to go home and do homework. So, thank you.
Thank you for your request. Any comments from Council members? Councilmember Hurst.
Thank you very much Mayor. And congratulations to you for being Woman of the Year and all the other wonderful recipients that we saw last Saturday at the Chamber Awards Dinner.
Thank you.
In the... The Council has probably received this Santa Cruz Let's Cruise Guide in their mail today. And inside, it does have a little feature about Watsonville and the Pajaro Valley. And we're glad to see the visitors and Conference Business Council acknowledge Watsonville in the tourist industry. Several exciting events recently took place. Yesterday was the Youth Council's meeting. And the Youth Council, of course, is... One of their goals is rebranding Watsonville, promoting public safety, and changing the perception of youth in the city. And they had a very constructive and positive meeting exemplifying all that's good with youth. And so I just wanted to point that out. They did have a discussion about open streets and a wonderful presentation from the Y-teens with the YWCA as well. The public has been advised that there is a meeting Wednesday, the 28th tomorrow, regarding navigating cell tower regulations. That will be held next door in our community room. It's a chance for the public to be educated and understand the federal requirements as well as what flexibility and discretion the Council has regarding cell towers. Yesterday evening, in addition to the Youth City Council, there was a town hall meeting at Watsonville High School where public safety was discussed. And there were a number of tips and suggestions made at that meeting. School staff was there as well as our Police Department. A lot of discussion, but not a whole lot of participation. There wasn't very many people present there at that meeting. And so hopefully, in the future, we can have a larger audience, a larger group hearing about how to secure your home, how to be safe in the community, and how to keep your kids out of gangs and safe as well. And so I want to mention that we will be having the City's Award Dinner for the employees on March 21st. And we look forward to that as well. In addition, there is a workshop taking place on... or a speech, or it's a workshop, on Monday, February 9th, Bringing Hope to Our Educational and Juvenile Justice Systems. This is a presentation by James Bell, noted expert and Executive Director of the W Hayward Burns Institute. And he'll be talking about ethnic disparities and juvenile justice programs. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia.
I wanted to share that recently I had a one-to-one meeting with interim City Manager Marcela. And the focus of our conversation was transparency and accountability. And I was very pleased to hear from Marcela that she assured me that all reports, staff reports that came to the Council will be based on transparency and accountability. And furthermore, she also said that she would support any of the Council members that are wanting to make sure that that's what we want for our city. And so I just want to say thank you, Marcela.
Thank you. Councilmember Dutra.
Thank you Mayor. A few things, I just want to touch on the Cell Phone Navigating Cell Tower Regulations Forum that will be happening tomorrow. As many of you probably know, there is a proposed cell tower that's going to be going into District 1, which also borders my district. So it's a very important issue for me, and I assume as with Felipe as well, Councilmember. And so please join us tomorrow to go over this... go over exactly what's going to... what comes out of the cell towers and how it affects our community. So I will be there, my Planning Commissioner will be there as well. Hopefully, we can answer some questions afterwards and do a little bit of a discussion as well. Next, Councilwoman Garcia and myself, we attended training in Sacramento at the League of Cities. It was a great council... It was a great training for both of us. But it also gave us the opportunity to meet with our local political politicians. And we met with Senator Manning. And we spoke about the water and development issues that affect our community. We also spoke with Assembly Member Stone, who... and we talked about ag technology and what we can do to bring that into our community since we are leading the way with agriculture. It was unfortunate, we did not get to meet with our local Assembly Member, but hopefully, one day, he can meet with us to talk about those issues. And also, it got the ball rolling. I know we've had a lot of issues on a loony parkway with... with traffic when they distribute food from Second Harvest once a month. The local police department, the city, myself and Second Harvest met. We're working on this issue and we're trying to see what will work back there so we can get traffic moving. I know a lot of people get rushed and things do not flow back there. So we're going to try something out in February. We're going to be, Second Harvest will be pre-registering a certain amount of cars so that we can see if this will work with the flow back there. Again, another issue that affects District One. And maybe we can work together and, you know, trying to think about issues. If this doesn't work, then we're going to have to think about something else that will work back there for the residents. Finally, I'd like to say congratulations to the mayor for her Woman of the Year for the Chamber of Commerce. It was a great event. Most of the council was able to attend. And I appreciate that they made that a priority. And Mayor, congratulations and to all the recipients who won their specific awards at the last chamber. And we appreciate it. We appreciate everything they do for our community. And the chamber is an important part of us as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Congratulations.
Sorry, thank you. I have a few things. Again, I think that it's a ditto on the results of the Chamber of Commerce and agricultural benefit this year with a sold-out crowd. It also gives us an idea of what our environment is doing and our community is doing and our businesses are doing at the success of a lot of the people attending that belong to the chamber and the expansion of the chamber. So hopefully, that is a good sign with our economic development in our neighborhood here. And again, congratulations for you as well as the other recipients here in town. I also wanted to mention that the Focus Ag, which was a course I took over a course of about nine months this past year, is being recognized. The 25th year was a class I participated with. To have a better comprehension of what agricultural is doing in this valley here, how it affects our economy, the jobs, education, the ability of what we can do and that kind of thing. So that, congratulations for being in the paper for the 25 years. And I think that we're looking at maybe other council members coming up shortly for that. As well as Annie Glass for their awards, for their annual arts award. And they have also been very influential in our community here as one of the leaders in the green products and whatnot that they're selling. So I wanted to make sure that I gave them some acknowledgement. And again, I think several of us from council listened in on what our Youth City Council had to say yesterday. And I think that it's a positive energy forward. There's a lot of things that you're doing that I know that we need to work together with as a team, do some consensus that we are, you know, trying to develop and bring out into the community. So great that you're back and full steam ahead with a lot of things that we're looking forward in the community. The last thing that I'm going to bring up is I am looking at a tentative date, perhaps at the end of March, for my district. I've done this in the past for the town hall meetings. And I will probably anticipate putting together another town hall meeting in District Six at the end of March. And I'd like to also thank the police department for the ride-along until about 1:30 in the morning on Friday. Encourage also other council members to participate. It's an eye-opener to understand a bit more of what our law enforcement does in our community, what they're looking for. And I think there was a lot of cross-collaboration too for things that allowed them to get up to speed of what we're doing as council members and other issues that are coming up that may overlap with the police department and our law enforcement in the community here. So I encourage other council members. I believe it's available for the community as well. So let's see others get that experience as well. And please contact the police department if that's something that would interest you. So, thank you.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to publicly thank the mayor for providing two meetings dedicated to the conversation and discussion around public safety and the continuing conversations that are taking place throughout the community. I know that, you know, there was a faith leaders brunch that brought together a lot of faith leaders in our community to also discuss similar issues and similar concerns. I also wanted to congratulate you on your recognition received. And work took me out of town, but I didn't want that misconstrued and misrepresented and didn't realize there was that much emotion behind it. But as well as, I also wanted to take this opportunity to recognize our Public Works and Utilities Conservation Academy on the Governor's Environmental and Economic Leadership Award. It's incredible. It's a great honor. And also shows our environmental stewards here that were present in our city, but that we're also nurturing through education in various pieces as well as what's offered at Paharo Valley High School and all of our different schools throughout that partner with our city. Also, yesterday, I was just very impressed by all of the different programs that are here in our city emphasizing inclusive governance. You know, one of the forms that we tried to definitely develop and increase is civic participation, civic engagement. And I was happy to see it, you know, here in our Youth City Council. I'm just very proud of all the work that they do, how engaged they are, the difficult questions they ask, the conversations they facilitate around various issues, you know, open streets as well as public safety. And as well as, you know, the forum that was held around public safety at Watsonville High School. I think it's also important, you know, we have constituencies that are dominant Spanish speakers. So I'm just very happy to see that our police department provided that intentional outreach. The group was small, but I think that allowed for even greater conversation. People were sharing their stories, their concerns, their own personal experiences about what they're afraid of and also what they're proud of. And definite ideas that they wanted to see implemented throughout the city from brighter lights to just having, you know, greater access to our police department. So I think inclusive governance, we've got to think about those folks, you know, that are under the age of 18. How do we get their perspectives to the table? As well as those folks that are Spanish-dominated speakers that don't come here to this council chambers necessarily, but they do attend forums at the various schools that their children attend. So it's important that we bridge that information gap so that we can have all these different perspectives at the table that help shape our programming and our policy decisions.
Thank you.
So first, too, I'd like to congratulate our mayor for honoring of Woman of the Year. I'd also like to
Thank you.
I'd also like to congratulate, you know, the $430,000, the $430,000 that the library got. You know, the Friends of the Library. Also congratulate the director, Carol Eisberg. You know, I was once a library commissioner and I always hold libraries near and dear. So I really want to congratulate them. I too was also at the, had the opportunity to attend the Youth Council. And, you know, it's really great. I really want to encourage people to attend the Youth Council meetings. It's great to see youth carry out their leadership. And I really encourage people to attend those. I also attended the Watsonville High School Town Hall on Safety. It was very informative. And what I really want to do is I really want to congratulate our Watsonville Police Department for doing such a thorough job, such a thorough presentation. And just perfectly spoke Spanish. It was a great presentation. I also had the opportunity to attend the ISTW Portuguese Crab Dinner. It was great, very well-attended. Big community here in Watsonville Portuguese. Great event. I've attended ever since I was a planning commissioner. The other event I want to invite people to is our Ramsey Park Study for the soccer fields, which is happening this Thursday. It's going to be at 6:30 at Ramsey Park. It's there at the Ramsey Center, right in front of Ramsey Park, near the soccer field. So that's this Thursday at 6 for the soccer fields. Thank you.
We've had a lot of comments tonight, so I will try and be a little succinct. I first want to thank Chief Solano. I think you are addressing gang violence in our community. I appreciate all that you and the police are doing. Meeting with the church groups was great. That's a start. And so thank you for your work. Judge Guy met regarding Girls, Inc. and trying to get that started in our county at some point. Interesting meeting. And I'm sure that we'll be hearing more about it. There was a great chamber mixer at the Valley Heights and we were fortunate to attend that. I really am appreciative of Bob and Elaine Stein. $430,000 to the library is, you know, it's one of those gifts and magnificent. Thank you. And then the Governor's Award, Tammy Stolen, how do you say it? Tammy is the last name. Stolson Ther. Stolson Howard. She was the one who went and represented the city and got the award from John Laird. It's really a magnificent thing because it emphasized our school tours that the city does from wastewater to the water and recycling facilities, to the nature center, to the science workshop. It's just a great, great award to get. And then the last thing I would like to say is how much I appreciate my colleagues that attended the dinner Saturday night. But also, the community was so supportive. Friends, other work colleagues, a lot of people were there. And I really, truly appreciate the support for Woman of the Year. Thank you very much for your support. It means a lot to me. And now I think we'll move on to Item 3.2.
Could I, could I make the recommendation for us to go ahead and move the PV presentation? Okay. And then also to congratulate the Man of the Year, who's also in our audience this evening.
Oh, is it? Where are you?
Congratulations.
Well, stand up back there. Man of the Year, Gary Manfree. Very good. So if we could do 3.2, is there any report out of closed session? Okay, let's move on to 3.3, Presentation of the Two 2014 Holiday Decorating Competition Awards. So we'll go down here. I don't know who's here. But if you, council members would go down and get ready to present these awards to your people, it would be wonderful. First, we start with District Six, Best Decorated Door, first place to Kathy Perez. All right.
Kathy, congratulations. You've always done a wonderful job, you and your husband. Although you get credit for the door this year, don't you? So I would like to congratulate you for putting out that extra effort. Our community likes to see our members do in terms of pride of ownership and pride of neighborhood. And I think it's a very good role model that you've done for our community to be able to put that together. And congratulations on your honor this year. So, thank you.
Congratulations, Kathy. And David.
Next up in our awards is Best Decorated Door as well. And the City of Watsonville's Beautification Committee and Parks and Community Services Department congratulates Esther and Augustine Herrera. Can you come forward, please? Esther not only does Christmas decorations, but Halloween decorations too and Easter and birthday and you just name it. She's, she's got wonderful decorations every day in her home. And I see your Christmas tree is still up too. And we like that.
I was waiting for the award to take a picture with it.
There you go.
We're glad to celebrate Esther and Augustine's community service and their wonderfully decorated home. And thank you very much for bringing joy to District Three. Thank you. Would you like to say a couple of words?
I'd like to thank my shy husband here and my grandson Victor. They're the ones that do the muscle work, the heavy work. My granddaughter Julie and my daughter Martha, they're help with the decorations of the door. And then I do all the unpacking and the repacking. That's my job. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Thank you, Augustine.
Next, we have the Best Indoor Lightery from District One, Annabelle Smith. Annabelle here? Okay, the Best House and Yard Contemporary Theme, first place.
So I will personally deliver this to Annabelle.
All right. From District Five, Janeth Banderas.
This certificate goes to Janeth Banderas. Are you here? Is that you? Oh, wonderful. Come on up. We want to congratulate you on receiving first place for the Best House and Yard Contemporary Theme. Thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And we have a second place from District Six, Best House and Yard Contemporary Theme, Galindo Medina.
Yes, Galindo, I'm not sure if I have you here this afternoon or this evening. But again, all of you that have won are examples of our community. And it helps those neighborhoods out when you're putting that extra effort in there to show appreciation and show some celebration for your neighborhood there. So congratulations for all of you that have participated as well as have won the honor for this year's goat. And I believe I'll hand this over.
Next one is Best House and Yard Religious, first place, Yolanda Velazquez, Ombrante. Is she here? From District Seven?
Miguel y Lidia Camargo. Nos equivocamos aquí. Pero sí le presentamos este Yolanda Velazquez, but this is District Seven?
District Seven, mine.
Okay. Y aquí se lo damos Best House and Yard Religious Theme. Felicidades.
Thank you very much.
Quiero agradecer a todo el concilio por este premio y agradecer a mi esposo, a mis hijos, que siempre me ayudan y motivar a todos los demás a que se animen a seguir haciendo esto. Muchas gracias y felicidades a todos.
Thank you. Can it translate, I think?
I want to thank everyone. I want to, I want to thank my husband, my childrens, and I want to ask or tell everyone to continue doing this. And thank you very much to all the winners.
Okay, and then our last one is Best House and Yard Religious, second place in District Two.
Miguel y Lidia Camargo, they're probably not here, but I'll deliver this one as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Congratulations to all of you, the Holiday Decorating Competition Awards. Appreciate you taking, participating.
Always thank the Beautification Committee for their dedicated service and going around and seeing all the wonderful activities in the holiday season. Thank you, Beautification Committee members.
And I'll get my district to do a house next year. I feel left out up here. We'll have spirit next year.
Okay. Moving on to the Consent Agenda. Is there any public input on any of the Consent Agenda items?
Just a quick question on Item Number 4.3, the Homeland Security Grant Funds. You know, Homeland Security Grants are sometimes kind of controversial in the area, but I don't think this one is. This is going to be $10,975 for scuba gear. Now, this is not James Verne Under the Sea. This is going to be for firefighters crawling through burning buildings with toxic gases being emitted. And I want to make sure that the fire gets a chance to say a couple of words about the importance of this.
Sure. Rob Ryan, Division Chief, Fire Department. In regards to the grant funds, they're for self-contained breathing apparatus, not underwater. It's for when we enter toxic smoke in buildings. That protects our lungs and gives us a, kind of extends our life with all the nasties out there in the world. So we applied for the grants. We were funded. And now we need to expend the money so we can purchase new bottles, which are, bottles have a shelf life. So ours are almost at the end. They're 15-year bottles. So we're at the end of our cycle. So we're, this will replace a few. So about a third of the bottles, we'll have to come back again and get another two-thirds somewhere. But this, the grant funds will another two-thirds somewhere, but this, the grant funds will, you know, really help us out.
Good, thank you.
Safety of our firefighters and our public is number one.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Love my job.
Stay safe.
Thank you.
Any other comments on Consent Agenda? Do we have a, go ahead.
I'll move Consent Agenda.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Felipe, did you want to...
Yeah, really quick, I just want to, I just want to thank Councilmember Rebecca Garcia for doing the Housing Commission, which has been empty for a while, so brave enough to do that one. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Just one item of discussion on 4.5. Philip Trevaras is a member of the Parks and Rec. Boy, we got a winner there. He's going to be just tremendous. I don't know if he's in the audience tonight or not, but he's a wonderful guy and one of my former students of Watsonville High.
Cervantes? Carmen Gomez?
Yes.
Dutra?
Yes.
Garcia? Hernandez?
Yes.
First?
Yes.
Bielsich?
Yes. So now we move into item 6.0, which is the Public Hearing of the Climate Action Plan and Establishment of Carbon Fund Program, which is being continued to February 24th. And we will move on to New Business, and I would like to move... Well, I think I'd like to move, go to Reports and Presentations. Is everybody okay with that?
That's item 9.1.
9.1. That's the Presentation of the Pajaro Valley High School Sports Field Summary of Progress and the Process. So again, this is not something that the council really decides on, but the council would like to be informed. So we are ready for a staff report.
Thank you, Members Bielsich, members of the council. Brett, are you coming on up here? Brett McFadden from the school district is also here. We're going to do a joint presentation. So I'll start mine. There's been a significant history between the City of Watsonville and the PVUSD creating a cooperative relationship to establish the Pajaro Valley High School out at 500 Harkins Valley Road. Between 1998 and 2000, the city and PVUSD worked cooperatively to update the LCP, the Local Coastal Plan. The Local Coastal Plan established the development envelope for the school, and as part of that, the school district prepared and certified an EIR, which is an environmental impact report, before it was submitted to the city for review. Then between 2000 and 2002, the city processed the coastal permit, O28, for the actual high school facility, 204,000 square foot building on 70 acres out on Harkins Slough Road, which could accommodate 2,200 students. This is the LCP maps that are a part of the city's 2005 general plan and the Local Coastal Plan that was certified by the Coastal Commission. It shows the building envelopes and also constraints areas for the future, which, again, this identifies areas, the potential nine-acre site is in the back area here. We won't be talking about specifics tonight, but the Local Coastal Plan does envision that, and it was incorporated. There were significant issues associated with the review of this project. It was very controversial during that timeframe for the Local Coastal Plan update. Protection of the surrounding environmental areas, the sloughs, adequate setbacks were created for agricultural areas, a 250-foot setback. Airport safety was a critical element that was reviewed in detail. Drainage, water quality, and establishment of an urban limit line that would not go beyond the west side of Highway 1. All of these were very significant controversies, took a lot of work with the community to get through them. They were generally resolved, and the council approved the project in June 26, 2001. As part of that approval, the field that is being considered by PVUSD at this time was not part of that original review or environmental impact report. This was not included because of budget issues. The LCP, Local Coastal Plan, that was approved, did consider including the potential site at the back of the 10-acre site, the back of the property. PVUSD now has funding in order to move forward with playing fields, design, and moving forward with the permitting process. The Coastal Commission has required that the city process a coastal permit amendment to permit O28 for the playing fields and recreation facilities as a modification that, again, this is the first step of the process. We do not have the details yet at this stage. We are just in the beginning of, the school district beginning to, first step is the school district must prepare an addendum to the environmental impact report that was previously prepared. This addendum will look at the facilities, including the playing fields, the auditorium, other recreation items, and that has to be looked at by the Board of Directors and certified before it is submitted to the city for review. The second step would be for the school district to submit the application to the city for the amendment of the existing coastal permit for the field and recreation facilities, including the analysis of how it complies with all the coastal permit policies and also how it complies with airport safety policies. The city and the city council will review the project to determine that it's consistent with coastal and airport policies at a public hearing. This process, we anticipate, will take four months. The last time it took four years. We're hoping four months, it happens. Following city council action, the project is subject to a 10 working day appeal to the California Coastal Commission. If the project is appealed, it must be reviewed by the California Coastal Commission during a public hearing process. If it is not appealed, then it would be an effective permit unless it goes to court. The school district, because there are some anticipated concerns, legal concerns, the school district is being requested to be responsible for legal fees associated with any city actions on this application.
You know, it's not just the fire equipment that's getting old. Other things are wearing out.
Eventually, we will have some public input. Can I have a show of hands as to how many people will probably address us, so we know time-wise? Okay, thank you.
You have music?
We need some. Do you sing?
I'll hum a few bars for him, sure.
Will you?
May I ask a question?
Okay.
With technical difficulties, we don't know in terms of we're going to be able to move forward, or how much time we're going to allow to move forward. It, oh, it looks like it's going to work.
Well, we're going to make it. It'll work.
Wonderful. I'll just signal Keith to go to the next slide, so, thank you. So you ready for me? Good. Madam Mayor and councilmembers, I think we got it back. Are you ready for us?
We're ready.
Excellent, all right, thank you. Mayor Bielsich and members of the council, my name is Brett McFadden, I'm the Chief Business Officer for the Pajaro Valley Unified School District. Before jumping in, I just have, I think, four slides overall. Before jumping in, I want to say two things. Number one, thank you very much to the council for your willingness to move this item up at the request of students and audience members. We appreciate that very much, it was a kind gesture. And then, second, I'd like to recognize members of my elected board that are here tonight. Board President Jeff Ursino, our past president, current member Kim DeSerpah, our, one of our members Leslie DeRose, and Lupe Rivas, along with our Superintendent Dorma Baker and our Assistant Superintendent Murray Scheckman, and then numerous staff from the school itself and other staff in the district, and students and parents and such, and we appreciate them coming out tonight. To give you a little bit of background, the next few slides will be perspective from the school, from the school district's point of view. As Mr. Boyle stated, that completion sighting and the permit process associated with this site was extremely challenging, extremely contentious, and I've been doing this in my career in numerous districts around the state for well over 20 years, and this is perhaps one of the most contentious school sighting and school permitting processes that I've seen in my career throughout California. Over four lawsuits were filed, actually, against the city and the school district during the overall process. Three were actually litigated, one by the district, and the final one was settled. The elements of that settlement reflect the school, the school itself right now, as well as the operations in and around that school overall. We looked at, during that process in the late 1990s and early 2000s, over 20 possible sites were considered. Approximately a dozen were given in-depth analysis. We actually, the first site that was chosen that we actually moved on and worked with the city on was actually a site near Pinto Lake, and that one was faced with significant challenges from the Sierra Club and several other environmental groups. Eventually, the site where the school is occupied now was chosen through a consensus and compromise process overall. I am happy to report and to say that, working in cooperation with state and federal agencies, along with the Wetlands Watch organization, the district has met its requirements and stipulations that were laid out in the 2001 LCP. The stipulations are quite exhaustive in terms of the work that we need to do in working cooperatively with Wetlands Watch for ESHA and wetlands restoration, as well as work and concerns with stormwater runoff and trash and maintenance and recycling there. We've done a very good job with that. Moving to our Measure L projects, as Mr. Boyle mentioned, that the school district only received a certain amount of money from the state school facility hardship program at that point in time, and we did not have enough money to complete the school overall. So in 2012, Measure L school bond was approved by over 68% of the voters in the district. Completion of PV High School was the top priority, one of the top priorities of the Measure L bond campaign, and we campaigned on that. So we're seeking the approval from the city and state and federal folks for three specific projects related to this school. Number one, a student auditorium on the existing campus. This would be sort of a multipurpose type of auditorium allowing performing arts, visual arts, and other types of cultural events that the school is lacking right now in terms of the available facilities. Number two, solar carports on the existing parking lot, in the upper parking lot where the students park. You'll see we have existing solar arrays that have gone in five of our schools locally. Watsonville High, for instance, and Rolling Hills Middle School now have operational solar arrays. That would be the same thing that we would put in at PV High. It would be actually our largest solar complex or project overall in the district at that time. And then finally, development of the nine, upper nine acres for athletic facilities, including track, sports fields, soccer fields, baseball fields, and then hopefully, we don't have currently have funding for this now, but hopefully in the future, room for some sort of competitive regulation pool that the site does not have now, but that's way off in the future. We'll go to the next one, thank you. General information about the high school, to sort of humanize this a bit. It is one of three comprehensive high schools that we operate in the district. It serves over 1,480 students overall. Over 94% of the students in the enrollment is Hispanic. Over 85% are classified under state and federal law as socio-economically disadvantaged. Now, I want to pause on that overall. Now, that's a state and federal terminology, but if you look at the miracles and the incredible work that goes on daily at that site, while they may, the student body or the school may be considered with that label, they are by no means resting on that. They are accomplishing great things, as we will show you in the next slide, if we could, please. Despite some challenges that the school site has, enormous work has taken place with significant achievement overall. Over 73% of the graduates attend college. We polled them one year after graduation, and we've been doing this now for three years in a row, and it's consistently been above 73%. It's one of the highest of any school, high school on the Central Coast. Over 65% of graduates are, meet UC and CSU A through G requirements. The A through G requirements are requirements that are required in order to have a shot at entering the UC or the CSU system. The average in the state is 39%, and the county is 48.5% overall. So we're well, well above that, and we continue to grow that. Continued steady progress on test scores. We have very rich and vibrant instructional programs in the areas of technology, environmental studies. Part of the requirements of the original LCP was the development of an environmental technology and environmental studies academy that we work in partnership with Wetlands Watch. Many of our students take their courses, math courses, environmental studies courses, science courses, and then we actually go out into the ESHAs for hands-on instruction and hands-on teaching there. We also have a very vibrant career technical education program at that site. High graduation rates, we've seen especially over the last five years, and then dramatic decreases in our overall dropout rates at that school, and they're doing incredible things. Challenges with the site that do remain is that many students struggle with issues associated with poverty, violence, economics, and limited services. We know firsthand through the data that sports and visual performing arts and other extracurricular activities are a key element to making sure that students stay in school and they do well. We require a minimum grade point average for students to participate in these activities, and when they do, by and large, they achieve academically and do very well. And then finally, we have equity and equality issues at play. PV High School currently right now does not have what other high schools have in terms of the vibrant athletic facilities and arts and music, as well as the programs related with that. And this puts the students and the high school at a disadvantage. Even with this, recognizing this disadvantage, this school site has been, and its leadership has been extremely creative, and the results that we've seen overall are testimony to that. Next slide. I think that concludes my comments, and we'll stand ready for any questions.
This time, we'll have questions from City Council. Councilmember Koflan Gomez.
Do you have any...
No problem.
Brett, do you have anything about the location of where this development is that you have an intention of moving forward with? Where on this diagram or map now would be where you're after making these changes or improvements?
Yes, while Mr. Boyle's bringing that up...
Okay.
It is in the upper quadrant of the map.
But it's not in the view of this particular...
This view does not show it.
No, it'd be just north of, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It would just be just north of the, both the staff and... It would just be just north of the, both the staff and the student parking lot. You'll see it in this, on this picture here, on the right. The upper quadrant, the skinny sort of point that goes up overall. That's the nine acres.
Closer to Highway 1?
Yes, yeah.
Other questions? Councilmember Garcia.
You started your presentation by pointing out that in your 20 years, this has been the most contiguous, okay, I can't pronounce a word.
Hard.
Hard. Can you expand on that? And I'm asking because I've heard through the grapevine that the school district has met with the Pilots Association and their attorney. Could you give us more detail about that?
Certainly. We've, before we started anything, it was actually Assembly Member, State Assembly Member Stone that provided this idea to us. Before we even met with city staff, it was, it was suggested to us that we conducts, I'm gonna call it a roadshow. And so, we conducted a roadshow with approximately 14 different groups. One of the first that we met with was the Pilot Association. That initial meeting was a information exchange. We provided schematic diagrams and reports and draft reports that we've met with them. We've subsequently, we had a second meeting, attorney to attorney at that point in time, where they, they provided their position on the matter, or where they, where they stand at this point in time.
And what is their position?
At this point, I can't speak for them, but they have indicated to us that they are in opposition of development of the nine acres, as well as the student auditorium. They would like to look at alternative sites through the process. And if there is an alternative approach, looking at, if the school district was willing to give up its nine acres, then there's a possibility of further discussions in regards to, could we move forward on the solar array or the student auditorium with that? We have communicated back to the Pilot Association yesterday that, two things. Number one, our preferred alternative is the nine acres that are occupied on site now. The district owns that, purchased that, and put that in place. That is our preferred option at this point in time. And then number two, as part of the EIR process, we will be required to consider all alternative sites. And I referenced in the previous process that we did at the late 1990s and early 2000s, we looked at a whole range of different sites throughout the community overall.
Councilmember Dutra.
Are the pilots the only resistance you have against this project?
At this point, yes, that we know of, that have communicated to us.
When the school was approved back when, was there resistance from, were there resistance from the pilots back then, or any other groups that wanted the school not to go in?
From the pilots, I'm not aware of any formal complaint. I believe we had one member of the public file a complaint against the district. Airport safety issues were cited in the several, in the other lawsuits overall. The, the issues that, the issues incorporated into the previous complaints were environmental, traffic, airport safety, location, land use issues. Those are mostly directed against the city overall. That probably encompassed the primary elements of the arguments made.
So, basically, there was, there was no resistance from any group except for one public person?
No, there was significant resistance from various environmental groups. Actually, I believe, I could, correct me, Mr. Boyle, but actually, this, the sighting of the school actually was formulated the creation of the Wetlands Watch organization, I believe, or at least into what it is today. Through that, though, we reached a final settlement with all of the parties involved in the litigation, and the district made a number of different concessions and, and operation, both operational as well as funding concessions for programmatic issues for Wetlands Watch, and we work in partnership with them now.
Thank you.
There were 14 appeals filed to the Coastal Commission, which I included the Coastal Commission staff report that summarized what those appeals were. I didn't give you the 250 additional pages of attachments because we weren't really discussing them. I wanted you to get a general sense of the contention that was and what the issues were at the Coastal Commission.
So, you're working with them now, though, and so there's only one group that has, is resistant?
To date, yes, that have communicated to us. We have, the other groups that we've worked with, for instance, Wetlands Watch, we also met with them. They have actually, as part of our ongoing partnership that we have with them in a cooperative relationship, they are actually part of our environmental review process. So, they were on the interview panel that chose the firm. They will be part of our internal EIR process with one of their representatives.
Is there some, is there able to get some sort of compromise with you and I guess the pilots to, if it's the fields that are the big problem, to maybe move forward with auditorium and, you know, focus on the fields later? Because that was my understanding, that it was just the fields, and not, not so much the auditorium, or is the auditorium an issue as well?
They have communicated to us, at least, I guess, I would say, an openness to consider those items. But they have also, one of their members did say to us that they are looking at this as all, all or nothing overall with that. Now, we will remain pragmatic, and we will remain open. We will remain transparent and engage in open communication and working with any other group that wants to. As we're working with Wetlands Watch and other environmental groups, and state and Coastal Commission, the city, I think it shows that our willingness to be open-minded on this. And we'll continue to do that.
Is there opposition with the solar panels, too?
I think there's concern about what, what impact those could have to airport operations. Would there be glare involved in terms of pilots on takeoff or on landing? But that's, this, what I'm, I felt a bit reluctant, and I'm on unsteady ground because I'm, you know, paraphrasing what they've said to us.
The letter that we have from back in 2000, it had the permission of the Department of Education, you know, that everything was a go. Is that still current today, 2015, 15 years later?
Yes.
Department of Education is good with this?
Well, they are good with the, the site as, under the current plans. Now, as part of the overall process, we will begin work with all agencies involved. So, we actually have met with, and Department of Education staff have actually been on-site and walked it with us, and we've begun that process. So, we will work with the following agencies. California Department of Education will work with the California Coastal Commission, State Fishing Game, Federal Fish and Wildlife, Wetlands Watch, Caltrans Aeronautics Division, City of Watsonville, County of Santa Cruz, and there's probably several others that I'm forgetting, as well as a myriad of different community groups as well.
I hope the students understand and the parents understand how many agencies you need to work with to move forward.
Yes, lots. Yeah, my, my fear is that they're gonna wheel me up to the ribbon-cutting.
Other council questions? Councilmember Hearst.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Mr. Boyle, I'm glad you didn't include that other 300 pages of, of appeal information. You know, a 65-page staff report on something that we're really not the deciders on is gonna be adequate, but we do need to know everything that's going on. So, thank you for offering that to us. Mr. McFadden, you've probably heard this, that there, there is occasional traffic issue already at the school with just the parents and the students coming and going. Is there any mitigations plan for sports facilities and larger groups in attendance?
The EIR process will identify traffic mitigation. As we analyze that, then we'll, we will be, you know, considering and then bringing to the city's attention ideas that we can have out there. We are limited, though, the site, you have to recognize that the site is limited in terms of, of what can and cannot be done. When you're surrounded by environmentally sensitive habitat areas, it curtails a significant amount of what you can and cannot do. But we'll examine that as part of the process. It'll be one of the top issues.
Other questions from council? Councilmember Hernandez.
So, I wanted to ask, can you tell me how this, how do you guys manage the sports right now at PV High? Does this impact other schools?
Oh, certainly, yes. So, as, at this point now, and practices do occur on the existing facility. And none of this map here, you'll see the bottom, bottom fields that are, that are displayed in the aerial there. Those fields are not regulation, however. We can have practice, but you cannot have full scrimmages or full games at this, this point in time. So, in order to have track and field events, soccer events, and lacrosse, or actually, there's no currently, we currently don't have lacrosse at this school now, but football events, you have them at other facilities, Aftus High School or Watsonville High. And so, when you add another high, another high school to another campus has significant impacts in operations, scheduling, use, wear and tear, all of that. It's huge. Thank you.
Councilmember Garcia.
I just needed some further clarification. The school district has to do an amendment to the original EIR. Once you do that amendment for the EIR, I'm not clear as, then at what time do you come to the city council to ask for a permit?
The, the process basically is that the school board has contracted to have an EIR addendum prepared. So, once that is done and it's certified by the board, that they'll be working.
Their board?
Their board, yeah, not, not you guys. They'll be working with us while we're looking at it. You know, we'll, we'll work with them and make sure we address the issues. But at the time that that is completed, we'll have enough information for them to be able to move forward with the coastal permit application. So, that would be, after the EIR addendum is completed, that would be the time that they would be able to submit the application to the city.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Cervantes.
I just wanted to clarify and also emphasize the role of the local coastal plan that we have in place. So, in reading a lot of the, the documents that are included in our packet, it does state that it's already been updated to include that back area that's reserved for the future consideration of fields and recreational facilities. So, then what is it that's coming before us if there's already preapproval?
Well, the, the LCP envisioned it, but it's a coastal plan. It's only a planning policy document. You have to come forward with an actual project to see how it complies with the policies. So, the policies, the report would basically outline all the consist, how the project that's proposed is consistent with all the policies that are in that. And they're extensive, you know, it's a large litany of findings that we have to make. There was over 150 findings that we had to make to make sure that it was consistent. And there's also the airport issues, those are not really part of the LCP. That's a separate issue.
Correct. And so, the process of applying the EIR that's being done on the consideration of current facilities, then the next step will be trying to identify those aspects that are in compliance or perhaps not in compliance with the, with the local coastal plan.
Correct. That's, we're requesting that a coastal plan analysis be done, so how it, how it.
Along with the EIR.
Yes, along with the EIR, and also the airport consistency findings, how that, how it meets the Zone 3 and the safety zones, all the other issues that have been raised and will, will become a more significant issue as we move forward.
Sounds like it. So, in some of the conversations, what are some of the alternative sites being proposed? Because part of what I hear being a big issue coming from student and parent concerns is that there is a lot of lost time having to travel to other facilities throughout the city to even have practices and games sometimes. So, what are some of the alternative sites being proposed? And how would they address some of the student and parent concerns?
We have no, at this point in time, we have no formal list because we haven't started the process. Some have suggested the consideration of Ramsey Park, for instance, that the district would work in partnership with the city on that. Some have suggested various properties in and near the school now. We will analyze all of those as part of the EIR and LCP process to determine, you know, would they be potential or viable options.
But the preference is still?
Yeah, our preference remains that the, the nine acres that we occupy now, that we, we hold and we paid for now, is the preference. And we come from that standpoint for a number of reasons, certainly land use and budgetary standpoint. But I think most importantly is from the standpoint of the esprit de corps of that, of the school. There's something they said for students, you'll probably hear from them, when they walk out on the field for the home advantage and they see their, their school's logo and their school's colors and signs there on campus or on that field. And that has a enormous benefit to morale at the school, which then translates into indirectly, as well as indirectly, as well as directly, a better school environment and student achievement in the long run.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kaufman Gomez.
Can you also just rebrief us on the timeline? The EIR is in the process, and it's going on the same time as the LCP in process, and the expectation of when we'll be revisiting? Because I have my questions, and I have a lengthy amount of questions, I believe you've seen. But I believe they're premature in asking them at this point because you have so many other things and other steps to go through before these can actually be addressed. So, I'm conservative on some of my questions, but let's just discuss the timeline so that we publicly know what our expectations would be and how long it may be before we actually move to the next level and then, and then from there.
The, I mean, the first step in that, it's kind of Brett's, is the timing on the EIR and how long it will take to analyze all the issues that need, I mean, they need to look at traffic, they need to look at lighting, they need to look at airport safety, drainage, you know, wide variety of things that will be identified and alternatives. I don't know what, generally, it probably takes six months to do that. And then it has to be looked at by their board and approved. And so, you know, I don't know what your board process is, but I know ours takes a little bit of time.
Thank you, if I may. This project, and the three projects encapsulated in it overall, represents the top priority of the school district in terms of its Measure L bond program. So, where we are cleared to move in a direction, we will move diligently, we will move fast. We've put in the resources in place, we've staffed up, and so we'll, we'll move as quickly as we can. That being said, we will also follow city's process, state process, and any other federal requirements that we, we need to do. We did that the first time around, and I'm very proud to say that the school has met its requirements that were laid out in the LCP. As Mr. Boyle laid out, there were over 125 of them overall, and we've, we're proud of that. And that actually has led to a better school in the long run overall. So, we'll continue to do that as we've done in the past.
So, from that, it sounds to me like you'll be revisiting us with council maybe six, seven, eight months from now, when you've gone through all of those hurdles and overcome a lot of the challenges and barriers from the findings from the EIR and the comments made. Thank you.
Yes, and we'll, we'll stand ready to come back at any time. We're doing that with a number of community groups. And so, if you want us to come back, we're, we're happy to do that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dutra.
There seem to be a lot of filings that were, that were in regard to the high school. Do you foresee any future filings from any specific groups? If you do, and let's say the council moves forward with granting permits, and we are sued, do, are we gonna be responsible for those fees, those legal fees?
If I may, council member, I'll answer the first one, the second one first, and then. The district will oversee and pay for the related legal fees associated with, with any actions with this project. That's a standard practice that's in place, not just, just for this jurisdiction, but any, any jurisdiction that, that we deal with or other school districts deal with overall. With that, and so we'll bear that, that cost, and as well as that staffing to do that. And we've prepared for that. As far as, you know, what we anticipate in terms of litigation, recognizing the past and how contentious this site was, and meetings that we've had so far, I would, would anticipate, you know, at least one this process, so. And again, it's Santa Cruz County, so you're gonna, you're gonna get one or two of those anyway. It's in the culture here.
Other questions from council? Let's go out to the public. Now, first, can you raise your hands if you're going to address us, so I can figure out time-wise? your hands if you're going to address this so I can figure out time wise? Okay, not too many. Okay, come on up and, and we'll take time for public input.
Hi, my name is Sarah Cheve, and as Councilwoman Fernandez mentioned, I read in the paper today about ideas sought for soccer field renovation. The city is asking the public for ideas during a series of two public workshops, the first to be held Thursday. Why can't the city and the school district pull their resources and come up with a facility that both can use? In this area, era of scarce resources, money, land, water, why can't the city and the school district work together and come up with a stadium? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kristi Manfree. I'm a community member and a supporter of Paharo Valley High School. I would first like to thank Mayor Bilisic and the city council for your support and help in helping us try and complete the Paharo Valley campus. In a moment, I'd like to share a quick personal story of why I think it's so important to finish the PV campus. There are many, many people who could probably get up here and give you numerous stories. We kind of, as a group, collectively decided to just share a few, you know, to kind of save time and not go over and over the same stuff. But, so I'd like to just ask those people that are here in support of the PV facility being finished to just stand, please. Thank you. Okay, so I'll give you my quick story. I have kids for whom school was very, very difficult. I personally had easy times with school, so this was a real difference for me. But what I realized early on is that I was asking my kids, because education is very important, to go day in and day out and do something that they weren't really very good at, or they didn't feel successful at. But they were really good at athletics. And athletics was the carrot that kept them going and moving forward. It, it wasn't always pretty, it wasn't always easy, but it kept them going. And I'm proud to say that my kids have college degrees, one has a master's in education. These extra things, these, the auditorium, the fields, they're important. Not everybody's great at academics. We got to keep kids connected and bought in. And these kids will come back and support our community. So I really do look forward to working together to finish the Paharo Valley campus. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. My name is Robbie Olson. I live in District Two. I'm the pastor at United Presbyterian Church and a basketball coach at Watsonville High School. Despite my loyalties to the Wildcats, I'm here to speak in favor of, of completing the Paharo Valley campus. As was pointed out in the presentation, more than 68% of our community voted to support this. And, and so I would urge the council to recognize that this is in fact the will of a significant majority of our community to see this campus be completed. Second, this is an equity issue. With the percentage of our students at PV who are socio-economically disadvantaged, Watsonville has the opportunity to be a leader in caring for rich kids and poor kids in the same manner. We have a terrible inequality in our country in terms of education. And I know that not growing up in Watsonville, I was the benefactor of a well-funded education system. And it is not by any particular merit of my own that I received it. And these students deserve the same opportunities. Secondly, we have been talking continually about gang violence and how to curb gang violence. And I think this dovetails beautifully with the desire to see opportunities for good involvement for students, and opportunities for students that encourage them to stay involved academically as well. Alternate sites are an option, but, but they're not the best option. And Watsonville has the opportunity to not only work for the good of all of our high school students, but for the best of our high school students. And part of that is completing this project at PV. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Gabby. I'm a senior at Paharo Valley High School. Track and field is a great sport, but it makes it hard to recruit and participate with no track. Each day, we don't know how late the bus to take us to Watsonville will come, or if it will show up at all. I remember one day last spring, a month before my first AP exam ever, calculus. I was going to go get help with math, but since it was almost track finals, I decided to go to practice instead. After two hours of waiting, the bus didn't show up. I wasted time I could have been spent practicing or studying. We have 75 practices in a season, and each day I don't know what to expect. We have had some great track athletes such as Zach Davis and Alyssa Rivera, who have made it to CCS, but people have never gotten to see them compete. We know that getting a track would greatly benefit our school spirit, would help support our athletes, and make it easier to recruit. I know that as a senior, I won't get to race on that track, but I hope that soon I will get to see future athletes cross that finish line on our home track. It is important to remember that this is not an issue just for the city. This is not an issue just for one organization. This is not even an issue for one school. This is a community issue, and it is the broader community and their benefit that must be kept in mind. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dan Cheve, Watsonville. For the first time, I attended the Chamber Dinner Saturday night. The Chamber outdid themselves in recognition and selection of the most deserving people and organizations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
What's this have to do with Agenda Item Number 9.1? It relates to recognizing some of the good changes that we see here. The Paharo Valley Unified School District's proposed or preferred site for the sports stadium is not in a safe location. It's playing Russian roulette with the young people's lives. It's a terrible idea, and we're all concerned about all these people here. There are other safe locations that could accommodate a sports stadium. One is across the road. You see the cursor on the picture up there. That's it, where the cursor is. Another is, as mentioned before, Ramsey Park. Both have big advantages over currently proposed, the currently proposed site. They're both safe. Both are much safer and can accommodate lights. The current planned site is in a prohibited location. That's according to the California Airport Land Use Planning Handbook, and how the courts say it has to be used here in Santa Cruz County. The state has not approved this stadium site for a number of reasons. Frankly, I don't see how it's possible to approve that site, the preferred site mentioned, that's so close to the airport, considering safety and other negatives. If the council wants to, you can ask Paharo Valley Unified School District to come up with a better plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, City Council. Madam Chair.
Good evening.
Honorable Board members. My name's Kim De Serpa. I'm a trustee for Paharo Valley Unified School District. And I don't really have much to add, other than what some of the other people who have already approached you have said. We passed our bond with much work. It was not easy to pass a bond. We had just come, Paharo Valley Unified had just come out of, like many school districts across California, an unprecedented time of cuts to education. I think we, we ended up cutting about $57 million out of our budget over a 10-year period. And simply put, our infrastructure for Paharo Valley Unified School District schools was crumbling. And we needed to pass a bond to do some basic work. We really needed to pass a bond. That was about $250 million. But we did some concessions on that so that we could get it through, and we ended up with about $150 million. So, a chunk of that money is set aside for the build-out of Paharo Valley High School. And as of, as a previous speaker said, it is really a matter of equity for the kids there. Sitting on, in cars and traveling across town is not safe for them. Having to use facilities at Watsonville and Aptos is not fun for them. Having to set up their concessions during football games and soccer games on tables from Costco is not fun for them in the rain, when other schools have, you know, their whole snack shack set up. This school, these kids, these parents, these teachers and staff there deserve to have their own facilities. The campus, the plan, has been vetted every which way it can be vetted. And I want to thank you for your support and for standing with us to complete this very important project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, my name is Lorna Gonzalez, and I'm a parent from PV High. I have already had three children attend PV High School. And I just want to say that for everybody who was instrumental in creating the third high school, I am so happy and thankful because I know the impact of having overcrowding in schools. I love school, and I always want to send that message to my children. So when the school was built, I was so happy to have my children attend a new school. Every time I passed by it, I would say, yes, my kids are going to go to that high school. I went to Watsonville High, but I just loved having a new school and having my children go where they go in their service area. So, when my, I just wanted to share a conversation I had with my second daughter that was attending PV High. My first one had already graduated, so my second one was there. And she was just sharing with me how frustrated she was. She says, why do you make me go to the school? It's not even finished. There's nothing here. We can't even do our PE because we don't have a field to run. They have to run on the parking lot. So, you know, right now I heard about why not have them go to Ramsey Park or someone else, somewhere else. You know, it goes beyond having the games. It's about the everyday, day-to-day things. It's like having your, your PE activities somewhere else. That's not feasible. I've had my kids injure their ankles because they're not running in a field that's appropriate for them. I'm a parent. I don't like that. I'm a hardworking parent, and I'm not home, I'm not there to help with the transportation from school to that place, to that place. I don't have time. I wish I could, but I don't. But again, when I had that conversation with my daughter and how frustrated she was, she, she said, Mom, take me out. Take, send me to Watsonville High. It's such a better school. You know what? No. I told her no because I do believe in them having pride of their school and them knowing that they need to be where they are going to go. But you know what? I knew with the first one, it wasn't going to be done. I was hopeful that when the second daughter was there, the field would be there. I'm on my third child now, okay? I, I hope that it's done before I have grandkids. But I am hopeful because I know that great minds can do wonderful things. So I really am asking the city, the pilots, all the associations that have to deal with making this happen, to come to a compromise and get it done. Because what's at stake is our kids. And I'm not just advocating for my children, I'm advocating for the children of my community. And like I said, I am, I support and I'm very proud of the schools, and I want all their children to be proud of their schools. So let's think about the day-to-day activities. PE involves more than going, it's about softball, football, cheerleading. It's, it's all these sports that they do every day. And if you go somewhere else, you can't do that. Okay? So I'm really asking for a compromise because I am hopeful that we will get there. And that's all I'm asking. As a parent, please help us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Council and Madam Mayor, Mr. McFadden. Months ago, weeks ago, some time ago, we asked the school district to provide us with the approved map of the site, showing the approved location of the high school from the Department of Transportation. They kept claiming that they lost the map, couldn't find it. So we showed them a copy of it. I was really hoping that they would present that map to the council this evening. But again, it seems to be lost. The school district owns three parcels of land, one of which the school district, school as it exists now occupies. There are two other parcels which were not purchased by the school district. They were gift-deeded. So the statement by Mr. McFadden that they were purchased may have been some interpretation of where the money went and why there were gift deeds involved. I don't know the story back then, but it must be an intriguing one. Those two sites that this project is going on have specifically not been approved by the Department of Transportation. So, any answer to Councilperson Kaufman Gomez's direct question, are these sites approved, which led the council to believe that they were considered approved, is false. So please make sure that the folks who present things to you are telling you the whole truth and nothing but the truth. The reason that there have been three lawsuits, and three lawsuits lost by the city, are exactly these things. The pilots only want you to follow the law. We will not sue you if you follow the law. We will not sue the school district if you follow the law. That's all we ask, is follow the law. And the possession of those parcels by the school district is very questionable. They shouldn't even own them. But I'll leave that alone. The pilots love children too. I have nine grandchildren in the Paharo Valley Unified School District. I don't want to play the emotional game with you. I love children. I want them safe. I love schools. I taught in them for 12 years, including the Paharo Valley Unified School District. I want the children safe. I want you to follow the law. And I'm tired of these emotional theatrics and political games, and I just want you to follow the law. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello. Thank you for allowing us to come before you. I'm Dr. Lupi Rivas. I'm a board trustee for Paharo Valley Unified School District. And I want us to think about what our priorities are. You know, we have this high school that services over, you know, 2,000 students. And then we have an airport that has private airfields, that has people that have private airplanes that will fly people to wherever they, we need to go for money. They can run their field based on their own schedule. Most of these people have hobbies. They fly for a hobby. It's not a commercial airport where flights are coming in and out. We're not LAU, you know, LAX. We're not San Jose. We're a little airport. And that little airport is trying to tell us what we have to do to accommodate them. They need to accommodate us. The, the school district is important. Our schools are important. Our students are important. Our community is important. We have gang violence on an everyday basis here facing- We need to make sure we prioritize our needs, and give the school permission to continue. And we need to make sure they have services that are going to further their education, not the leisure of these pilots that are there for their convenience. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other members of the public? Bring it back to council for any final comments. Councilmember Dutra.
Mr. McFadden, can you, one of the comments was made about land being granted and deeded, and not really the property of the school. Can you clarify that, please, from your end? I'm curious.
No, I was not with the district at the time, but I can just say that we have California Department of Education permitted numbers for facilities and our acreage there. We own those, that entire site, all acreage, as well as the nine acres outright. There's never been any sort of legal, formal, or institutional challenge to that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kaufman-Gomez.
Certainly, this is a topic that takes further discussion, and we want to really make sure that the community, and the school, and the city come together to collectively continue the dialogue, as we're going through the process of the EIR, and all of those details, and the minutia that finally needs to come out to the surface here, so we can work collectively, and resolve a lot of the issues that seem to be coming up. Because certainly, we know that there is a discriminatory factor with it being uneven between the school systems, and we do need that equality throughout. And it certainly isn't for the lack of need at all, but let's make sure that we're doing things by the book, the way we need to, if it means that we go to the state for what we need to do, for the exceptions, or the school district for that matter, I should say, to do so. But to continue the dialogue, and showing us where we're making progress with this, and to get this to be a very, a goal that we can achieve quickly here, and resolve it as quick as possible.
Any other comments from Councilmember Hearst?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just refer the council to page 61 of the staff report. That's a map that's titled Vicinity C. On that map, on page 61 of 65, you'll see a number of proposed road widenings, and proposed off-ramps. You also see that Lee Road is closed at Struve Slough, due to flooding. And also, Harkins Slough Road closed at, on the other side of the school toward Buena Vista. I would just suggest, as you approach the EIR process, that there might be some way that those roads could be reopened, and that that might alleviate some of the congestion, and some of the backed-up traffic that currently exists, and will probably get worse. Also, the concept of having an emergency access off of Airport Road, or maybe just a bike trail, or a walking trail, or some way that some of the, you know, students could enjoy nature on their way to school, rather than breathing auto fumes. Just a couple of suggestions as you approach the EIR. Thank you.
Any other councilmembers? Councilmember Cervantes.
I just wanted to thank the student organizers, and of course, the parents that are here, for elevating the discussion and moving it forward. I do think there's a lot of issues facing us as a city council, in partnership with the school district, around, you know, the smartest plan for accommodating our student population here in our city, and of course, just overall, our population growth that we experience as a city. It's a complicated process, you know, having to balance, you know, the needs of the district, the needs of the community, as well as, you know, a lot of the environmental concerns that surround PV High School, definitely as well. But I congratulate you for being here tonight, for starting the discussion months before. And we hope to continue to stay connected, and to continue to hear your voices throughout the process, as well, because I think it's very important that we remember, you know, who are going to be the beneficiaries of the facilities and fields being completed at the school site, as well. So just thank you again.
I think all of us want the school to be completed. That's a priority. And what I hear from the pilots, we want safety for the students. We don't want anything to happen. And I can assure you that the school district doesn't want anything to happen, either. And I'm hoping that we can find a compromise at some point, because all of us want the same thing. We want those fields finished, we want the students to be able to have their school completed. Aptos High took a long time, and I think it's time for PV High to be finished, too. Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. You know, first, I believe our previous general plan allows for the building that the district is seeking, the previous general plan that we adopted as our current one. And I believe that our Ramsey Park currently is over-impacted, and I think it's, it would be incompetent and reckless to choose that as a site. As a matter of fact, we're having a meeting on Thursday about Ramsey Park. You know, and I know this is not an action item, but I can't believe it's been over a decade that PV High hasn't had a sports facility. You know, it's a, I think a sports facility will give our local teams inspiration, you know, to have their own field. I can't imagine playing, for 10 years, the team's playing, and never having home-field advantage. You know, using the neighboring high schools' field as their own. You know, I played football in high school, Watsonville High School, but, you know, I couldn't imagine never playing in our own field. You know, it's always like being away all the time. You know, I think this will instill a lot of confidence, and build the morale of PV High, and all our students. I think it'll benefit Watsonville High School, too. You know, in the Army, we used to call this, "Building Esprit de Corps," or "Building the Morale." You know, if they have the funding, which it sounds like they do, PV High should build their sports facility. Which, by the way, I was one of two councilmembers that did support Mejorel, endorsed it. I also believe it'll benefit our city. I know that currently, we do have MOUs with some of the fields with the high school. So it'll benefit the city as well. And, you know, lastly, I'm all for this. I'm all for the building of the sports facility at PV High. And I will speak at Sacramento, I will speak at Carmel, I spoke at Carmel, for the third high school, a long time ago. And I'll speak again if I had to, you know, so, thank you.
Councilmember Garcia.
One of the speakers mentioned that the truth was not being given to us. And what we receive are documents signed by officials, saying that this document is real. And so, if there's some thought that the truth is not being given to us, then we need to see what the other truth is, and that that should be given to us also. But until that occurs, then what we receive, we believe, is real, and we will act upon that. And as a result, we are following the law, because those documents are the law. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our presentation. I appreciate all of you who came tonight to discuss this item. It's important to all of us, and hopefully, we will get that school finished, sooner than you think. Thank you very much.
[inaudible]
We're still going on the agenda, but you can, we have another item.
We still have two more items on the council meetings. We'll be here till 9:30, 10.
Okay, we're moving back to item 8.2. And this is the issuance of a request for proposals for consultant services to coordinate the recruitment and selection of a city manager, in consideration of ad hoc subcommittee appointed by the mayor to review proposals. So do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Bilicich, and members of the city council. I'm Natalie Manning, the Human Resources Manager, here tonight to discuss the very important task of hiring a new city manager. As you know, former city manager Carlos Palacios resigned after 22 years effective January 16th, to take a position as a deputy CAO for Santa Cruz County. Since then, Assistant City Manager Marcella Tivancis was appointed, has been appointed the interim city manager, to serve in this capacity until a permanent replacement can be found. Tonight, we're recommending that the council consider hiring an executive search firm to coordinate the recruitment and selection process, for the expertise, objectivity, and their ability to conduct a comprehensive outreach campaign. So the first step is to authorize the issuance of a request for proposals, or RFP, for consultant services to conduct an executive search for city manager. It's also recommended that the mayor consider appointing an ad hoc subcommittee to review the proposals, and make a recommendation of the consultant to the full council. The RFP will include a scope of work, including developing the candidate profile and recruitment strategy, creating an outreach and advertising campaign, conducting the candidate screening, and assisting with candidate selection, background, and job offer. It's expected that the consultant will serve as a primary contact to the city council, to guide and advise through the recruitment and selection process, interview the council members regarding their desired qualifications and characteristics of a city manager, advise the council on all phases of the recruitment, including who should be involved and at what level, including the community, stakeholders, and staff, coordinate the collection of the desired input per council direction, develop the recruitment materials and the outreach and advertising campaign, review and screen the candidates, recommend and facilitate final selection process with the city council, conduct the background on the final candidates, and also assist with negotiations of the final compensation package, if requested. We expect the proposal to include the firm's qualifications, the work plan, the detailed costs, the proposed schedule, any recommended additional services that we may not have included in the RFP, and the references. The RFPs will be due to Human Resources on Thursday, February 19th, at 5 o'clock. So with that, it's recommended that the council approve the issuance of the RFP to the qualified consultants specializing in executive searches. And then prior to the receipt of the proposals, it's recommended that the mayor consider appointing an ad hoc subcommittee to review those proposals, and bring a recommendation of the consultant to the full council, at the first meeting in March, or as soon as is practical. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
City Council questions. Councilmember Dutra.
I think this is a great idea. I think that, when you're talking about the committee, would that be three council members and one person from each district? Was that, have you given a recommendation, or, Marcella?
So, this is not, this is just to look at the proposals from the consultants, to pick a consultant, not to pick the city manager.
Oh, okay.
So, we're asking for three council members to help staff go through the proposals from consultants, and recommend to the city council the preferred consultant.
Oh, so we're...
That's all we're discussing now.
So the staff isn't going to be bringing us the consultants? We have to actually work with the staff to...
No, we can do it. We thought...
They'd like to have our input, and then, the three people, whoever they are, will have, work with staff, and then come back to the full council before a decision is made.
Yeah, and if only two of you are interested, two is fine. If only one is interested. We are trying to include you in the selection of the consultant, so a consultant is selected that seems to you the most appropriate.
Well, how long is the timeframe to you, to...
To do this?
Yes.
I expect, well, I expect we will get, let's say, five proposals. Let's say it takes you 30 to 45 minutes to review a proposal. The meeting to decide on which consultant will probably be two hours, or one and a half. That's the timeframe I'm looking at. So, it is just for you to have some input on which consultant you think is giving us the best proposal.
The recommendation is to, that the deadline for submitting proposals would be Thursday, February 19th, which will be just a little over three weeks. That seems like a very short timeline. Why is that being proposed?
It is a short timeline, but we're sending them out to professional executive search firms, so we're assuming that they're, they've done this a lot, they probably have their proposals ready to go, they just need to change them around a little bit. So we're hopeful that they can meet that deadline. If that deadline comes, and we don't receive many proposals, then we can always consider going back out and extending the deadline.
Okay, as long as we can consider extending the deadline. Okay.
It's all boilerplate.
Other questions? Councilmember Cervantes.
I just had a question regarding the committee, once they get together to review the proposals. I know that they'll be evaluated based on experience and qualifications, ability to meet the needs of the city, as described in the resolution for proposals, as well as cost-effectiveness. And those are very subjective. So I'm wondering if there's a rubric in place, where each of those will receive some kind of numerical ranking, and then at the end, you'll sort of regroup and see which has received the greatest number of points, or...
Sure. We can certainly come up with a little rating system, and we can get input from other cities on how they've done it, and then come up with a little rating sheet, so the committee can go through and rate them on the different categories, and overall, their overall score.
I mean, it might not have to be that complicated, but...
We could just come up with a quick little rating, yes, a little rating sheet.
Right. And then my other question has to do with, you know, you sort of threw out the number that maybe we'll get five responses to the RFP. You know, we don't know yet. But I'm wondering also, if all of us will have access to be able to look at those, if we choose to. I mean, we don't have to be involved in the whittling down of the decision, but will we have access to look at those as well?
Yeah, why don't we plan on having a set in the custody of the city clerk, for anybody to come and check it out?
No, you can just go.
Go and look at them.
Go and look at them, they'll be sitting there. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other council questions? Councilmember Hearst.
Not a question, Mayor, just a willingness to serve, if it's the will of the council to assist the process, that's all.
Any other questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Gomez.
I had a question, maybe it's the next step over on this one, and you're saying the, let me get my notes right, number of people on advocate subcommittee? Could you explain that a little bit more? Because it seems like that was part of what the presentation was about, that I had a question, or the...
Three, three ad hoc members of the subcommittee.
I thought it was something else, in terms of the community was involved in that part of it.
No, the community is not involved in the selection of the consultant. But one of the criteria for selecting the consultant is the community outreach effort that is being proposed. And so, at that point, you have already selected the consultant, and the outreach they're going to do, and they're going to go do all that, until they bring you back the actual
Other council questions? Do we have any input from the public? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. I would like to know who, which councilmembers are interested in being on? I've heard from Councilmember Hearst. Any others? Okay, thank you.
I move approval.
Second.
Okay, so, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I move approval of resolution authorizing issuance of requests for proposals.
Second.
Second.
It's moved and seconded.
Sabantes?
Yes.
Captain Gomez?
Yes.
Dutra?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Hearst?
Yes.
Belisich?
Yes. So moved, okay, and we'll move...
That's sent out tomorrow.
All right, great. We'll move on to eight point three, which is the River and Creek Levees Community Consensus and Contract in the Amount of $250,000 to a Company for Community Outreach Work Required to Complete the D W R Proposition Fifty. So we need a staff report. And this is kind of interesting, because we did have a meeting this morning with the Zone Seven Flood Board in Santa Cruz, and Director Palmisano was there. I'm sure he has some more information to share with the public. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Belisich and members of the city council. Steve Palmisano, and I'm here with Environmental Projects Analyst Jackie McLeod. I'd like to introduce her in case you haven't met her, but I think many of you have. And so we are going to give you an update on the Paharo River Flood Control Project tonight. So I'm going to give a little bit of background and overview, just because I haven't spoken to you in a while about this topic, and then Jackie's actually going to address the item eight point three on the agenda. So, our levees were constructed in nineteen forty-nine, and even just six years after they were constructed, they breached, and we had a flood on Christmas Day nineteen fifty-five. And those are the very same levees that protect our community today. The worst flood in our history after that was in March of nineteen ninety-five, and that's what this picture of shows, it was about eight to ten feet of water or more in the town of Paharo. So our existing levees provide what they call an eight-year level of flood protection. That means statistically, our, our odds of being flooded are once every eight years. We are working to provide a new levee system that would give us one-hundred-year level of flood protection, and that is the standard of protection in the state. So we have one of the lowest levels of flood protection in the entire state. So I have actually been working on this project. It was one of my first projects for thirteen years now, unbelievable. And when I started, you know, we, we started out, and by two thousand four, there was a project that was proposed. We had some community consensus around this project. It was submitted to Washington, D.C., and at that point, it was rejected by headquarters of the Army Corps as being essentially too expensive, not cost-effective enough. And so they sent the Corps District, they work out of San Francisco for us, back to the drawing board. And then we didn't get federal funding for many years, so the project has moved incredibly slow over these years. Finally, the city actually was, got very aggressive about getting grant funding for this project, and in coordination with Santa Cruz County, we secured a couple of very large grants through the state that have been carrying this project in many years where federal funding has not been available. And so the project itself would include new levees along the Paharo River, along Salsapuitis Creek, where there are levees now, and then new levees along Corletus Creek up to Airport Boulevard, and also some areas around College Lake. So this is the project that was proposed in two thousand four that was too expensive. It went from Murphys Crossing all the way down to the mouth of the Paharo River, and then up Corletus and Salsapuitis Creek. The Corps came back with as much scaled-back project shown here that essentially only protected the urban areas of Watsonville and the town of Paharo. And so Santa Cruz County was opposed to this plan because it preferentially protected Monterey County, especially in the agricultural areas. So they've been working with the Army Corps along with Monterey County to come up with an, sort of a agreement that meets some of the requirements. And so there is, the Army Corps has come up with a project that provides some protection to the agricultural areas, as well as a one-hundred-year level of protection to the city. And so that's where the Corps is now, and that's good news. So the hard thing is, the biggest challenge on this project is, has always been securing enough project funding. And so we are in the design stage, and even getting enough money to get the project designed has been incredibly difficult and challenging. Once we get it designed, we'll be looking at construction costs of $200 million. So the good news is that the federal cost share of this project is $150 million, which is incredible. That's a huge value for our community, and the local cost share will be $50 million. And so we, as a local community, are going to have to come up with that money through some kind of assessment or property tax. And that's going to be very challenging, and that's why this consensus project that Jackie's going to talk about is so important, because we, as a community, are going to have to come together and agree on a project and agree how to pay for it together, or we lose the entire thing. We'll lose $150 million in federal funding if we don't come up with our share of the local costs, which is 50 million. So the good news on that part is, back when John Laird was our assembly member, he passed a bill, A B twenty-three forty-eight, and in that bill, he set aside half of the local cost share in state grant funding for us. So that is there. A couple of weeks ago, I was in Sacramento and met with the Deputy Director of Department of Water Resources, and he assured me there was actually money in that pot available. So if we build this project, we have half of our local cost share available, so that's good news. But we still need to come up with the other twenty-five million, which is hard news. So one of the things also that's very important for moving the levee project forward is securing regional support for this, because we rely on state and federal funding for the bulk of the costs. And so there's the one agency that does this, is called the Paharo River Flood Prevention Authority. And Mayor Belisich and Mayor Protem Hernandez are both have, represent the city on this board, on this agency, and it's really important, because it brings together Monterey, Santa Cruz, Santa Clara, and San Benito Counties, and provides broad-based support. We've been able to secure a much broader array of support over the years, including these various elected officials through this agency and through this work. In order to keep the project moving, the Corps has requested $1 million for this coming year in the federal budget, and in case we don't get it, we still have state grant funding to keep the project moving, which is very good. So our legislative strategy for the years is to continue to work with the Army Corps and to continue to work on a regional basis with our legislators to build support back in D.C. to get this project funded. And it's really important. One good news item I have is that we have heard that Senator Feinstein included this project in her budget this year, which was big, and that's, we haven't been included in the federal budget in a couple of years. So the Army, our local Army Corps District has done some really good work over the last couple of years to help us be better positioned for federal funding, so it looks like it's working, so that's good. We are also continuing to work with our state legislators and state funding agencies to look for additional grants to improve our existing levees. So where are we now with the levee project? So the Army Corps has recently completed a preliminary, preliminary project design of a number of different project alternatives. And so in December, just this last December, we had a big meeting with the Corps that included the Corps headquarters in D.C., and they approved all of these project alternatives. So that's really good news. That means when we move forward, we're not going to get sent back to the drawing board like we did last time. So that's the good news. Also, the Corps is under new planning requirements, and basically, the federal government has come down on the Corps and said, you get your projects done in three years, or we're just going to get, get, take them off the books. So again, we, as a community, have to come together and figure out what project we want as a community and move forward. We can't keep debating and trying to make it perfect. We're going to have to find a project alternative that works for our community, and bite the bullet, and, and just agree on something and move forward, or all of that federal funding is going to go away. And so that's the new state of the Corps, and it's important that we pay attention to that. So the Army Corps, over this next year and through this community consensus project, process, if the council approves this contract, will be coming out to the community to explain what the project alternatives are, and also taking input about those alternatives. So the schedule would be basically starting community outreach from February or March through December of two thousand fifteen, and that's when the grant funding runs out. So we have to do all of this work within the next year. And then other milestones include the Corps will select an alternative that they will support federally, and then also the community, if they don't like what the Corps provides, the community will have an opportunity to propose an alternative design. And so all of that can happen in the next year. One thing I wanted to make note of is that Santa Cruz County and the Zone Seven Board, which represents the Flood Control District, has done a number of things over the past few years that are very important improvements to our existing levees. So this is just working with what we have now and making it better. And so they've, they secured grants to do what they call the Bench Excavation Project, where they removed excess buildup soil from within the existing levee system, and they removed 300,000 cubic yards of soil out of those existing levees, and that created a great amount of additional capacity for us. So that was a very important project that took two years. And then over the last year, they just finished doing what they call bench restoration, levee crest restoration, where they, the levees have settled over time because they're so old, and so they did surveying, and they put more material on top of the levees to make the levees higher, which gave us, again, some significant levels of protection over what was there before. So those are both two important improvements that they've done over the last few years. So just on that note, that's just a brief update. It's a very long history, very complicated project, but I wanted to give you a brief overview so you'd have context about this particular item, eight point three, which I'll now turn over to Ms. McLeod.
Good evening, council members and mayor. So I'm looking into this community consensus grant. As Steve, Director Palmisano alluded to, we are being funded by Proposition Fifty Grants, and this is going to run out in, I think we have to submit all paperwork to D W R by January twenty sixteen. So this grant was originally awarded to Action Paharo Valley, and I think it was last year or twenty, twenty twelve, this got transferred to the city of Watsonville. We said we would take over this grant and do the work in the community, because it is our community. So in the fall of this year, we sent out a request for qualifications, where we solicited to consulting firms who have expertise in community outreach, community facilitation, and community consensus. We talked with our partners who work with us through Zone Seven and through the counties of Monterey and County of Santa Cruz, and we selected Moore Econofono-Goltzman Incorporated, also known as MIG Incorporated, and they were ranked the highest of all submitted. I don't know. So MIG Incorporated has been involved with the Paharo Valley watershed since nineteen ninety-seven. So again, that history of working with the Corps, they already bring that experience and expertise. Their main expertise, when we look through their request for qualifications, is really in community facilitation, outreach, and communication, because there's been this gap as we look at what the Army Corps has done and where we're at now. There needs to be a lot of education for the community, and so they fit the scope of services that we really needed. So their scope of work that we requested, and we're still working heavily with them, is mainly public engagement in the community. And so I just want to reiterate what Steve had said, is this is an opportunity for the community to learn about the levee project, and it's an opportunity to really provide their input on these alternatives to have a successful levee be built. And one of the deliverables is creating a community guide to flood risk reduction. So the Army Corps really refers to flood protection now as flood risk reduction. So that's one of the deliverables, is this public engagement. The next deliverable is that we asked for coordinated stakeholder meetings. So this is working in the overall project area, because we're talking about the Paharo River, but as Steve pointed out, we're also looking at individual reaches of the river that are going to affect different parts of the community. So the Army Corps really breaks up the river system into Reach One, Reach Two, Reach Three, et cetera. We're also going to be looking at the creeks, so Salsapuitis and Corletus Creek, and we're going to talk to everyone who's involved in those areas and really get their, their feedback on the project. The next deliverable that we're looking at is, we have this Paharo watershed, web portal that has been existing, and city staff has been maintaining it to this point, but we really would like MIG to update the web portal and include new project maps for where we are right now, and to update some of the content, include objectives working towards a T S, tentatively selected plan and a locally preferred plan. They also need to provide updated fact sheets on the project to the community. The next deliverable is individual stakeholders or outreach. So as we work in the community, and when you get a room of 100 people together, you may not get the feedback that you need to then move forward. So they're going to help, MIG is looking to help us facilitate small discussions among, looking at about 20 different people that represent the community. We're also looking for individual interviews, so one-on-ones about the project, and as well as an opinion survey. The last deliverable is working with the Army Corps. The Army Corps has to do a public outreach campaign as well, and so we're trying to coordinate a public involvement effort with the Army Corps. So we're looking at the federal, which is Army Corps team, and the non-federal project team, which is the County of Santa Cruz, County of Monterey, City of Watsonville, and Zone Seven. We really are looking for the local perspective on this levee project, and we are looking to educate the community. So there's different ways that the community can already get involved. They can attend the Zone Seven meetings like we had this morning at the county. I believe we have two in Watsonville this year, as well as two in Santa Cruz, and really get engaged in the community consensus project. We're very lucky that city staff has uploaded Zone Seven agendas to our city website, but this community consensus project will get them more involved in working with the Army Corps and on the actual levee project. So it is staff recommendation that the city council authorize the city manager protem to award and minister a State Proposition Fifty Grant Contract for the Levee Community Consensus Project to Moore Econofono and Goldsmann Incorporated in the amount of $250,000. Any questions?
Questions from council? Councilmember Garcia.
Steve, you mentioned about the, did I remember correctly, 25 million for local funding that we need?
Right.
And so in terms of the design being developed, and then deciding about funding, when does that come in? About how we, when, and when we decide about the funding?
Well, that is actually part of the scope of this contract, is to create a scope of work for this, for Santa Cruz County to hire a consultant to do the financial analysis for us.
Okay.
So the Army Corps will provide cost estimates for each of the project alternatives. And then what we want to do with this process is to let the community know how much it will cost us as a community translating the, the local cost share to a, for example, a property tax assessment, or some other kind of assessment that will be applied to everybody who receives benefit from the project. What will that dollar amount be, you know, on these various project alternatives? So we're looking to include that as part of this year-long process. So that's a very good question, thank you.
Councilmember Dutra.
First off, Director Palmisano, I think you guys are doing a great job. I really like your work so far. I want to kind of, kind of piggyback off of Councilwoman Garcia. The 25 million, if we, if we can't raise the 25 million through, because I was, you were saying, you were saying assessments, and I'm assuming probably some sort of tax. I mean...
A tax or an assessment? It's not clear yet which way makes the most sense.
So what we're going to get directly from this, this group is whether, we're going to, we're also going to see if that's going to be a popular idea with the residents, to see if that will fly.
Right.
I mean, this seems like a really important issue, and that's something that needs to be addressed. So if we lose all this money, then we're going to be eventually left with maybe even possibly a bigger problem if our, our levees overflow. possibly a bigger problem if our flood levees overflow. So, how do you think we will go about in raising the 25 million, and do you feel that it's something that we can possibly do?
Oh, absolutely. I think it's very doable. It would be probably doing some kind of, some kind of property tax maybe, or Zone Seven already has a flood control assessment that we pay as part of our property taxes. It could be an expansion of that. We could buy bonds, you know, to spread out the cost over 30 years or 40 years, something like that. The other thing to keep in mind is our goal is to achieve 100-year level of flood protection, and if we are able to do that, then the flood insurance rates will go down significantly for people. And so, it will eventually become potentially like a wash because insurance rates will come down in, you know, eventually, once we get that certified, and then that would make up for the increase in tax assessment.
Would this be a city tax or a tax just to the districts affected, like seven?
It would be a Zone Seven assessment, I believe.
So, just the people who live in Zone Seven will be responsible for the tax?
Most likely.
All right. Yeah.
Councilmember Hearst.
Mayor, this is a big deal. We've got people that don't remember the flood in 1995. Even fewer people remember the flood of 55. Could we get the map back of the, of the watershed area, one of those first slides that you showed?
Remember those blue barrels all over the community?
That's right. Now, we've got, we've, we need 100-year flood protection, but we only have eight.
Oops.
That's pretty scary. What's happened is that, you know, even, even though we've, we're in a, an aquifer in a basin that's overdrafted, it's not that case upstream. And so, you know, with the irrigation and, and water flow up in San Benito County and Pisinas and Hernandez Reservoir, they don't necessarily care that much about what happening, what's happening in Watsonville. They might not want to pay for any of this stuff.
No, they probably won't be paying for any of it.
Well, we need to build a consensus with those folks that are, that are affected, and we're going to be having drainage from those areas, and they have more impermeable surfaces all the time, more, more area covered with, well, you name it, parking lots, plastic, you know what's out there. So, this is going to be very important with the Corps of Engineers, which has been kind of problematic in the past to work with for one reason or another. They're a big bureaucracy. They've got other priorities, but hopefully, we can get some new traction with them. But what we're facing is, is danger here. Humans are in danger, businesses are in danger, even ag land is in danger by what can and probably inevitably will occur. And it really doesn't have to rain that hard in Watsonville. All it has to do is rain hard in San Benito County and maybe in parts of Santa Clara County, and all that comes down through Chittingon Pass and gets in our system. And so, this is a big deal, and we need to build a partnership with the stakeholders, with the agricultural community, with the property owners, and, and everybody who's going to be at risk over this, who already are at risk. You know, it's a drought year, and so, we don't tend to think of these things, but those of, those of us who remember 95 and those who remember 55 know that this is a big deal, and we've got more people at risk, more property at risk, more highly valued land at risk all the time. So, we need to move forward with this, I believe.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Kaufman-Gomez.
I have a few questions for you as well. The 25 is a result of what Santa Cruz County needs to contribute, even though there's Monterey Counties, are they matching that as well, or are we just stuck with 25 on our own regardless of the other counties?
Monterey will be part of that 25 local cost share.
Okay. So, maybe even half of that, so we're down to maybe 12 and a half instead of 25, which is a smaller number to be able to achieve. And certainly, we don't want to be losing the other resources that are making up 90-plus percent of the overall project costs. The, this is a particular bond, so this is not money coming from the city that's going to be used for this consulting agency, so we need to let the community be aware of that. And the, there was a Proposition 218 that was mentioned in your report. Can you share or elaborate a little bit more about what that meant or what that, that proposition was for?
Well, Proposition 218 is the law that regulates how new revenues are approved by the local jurisdictions. So, we would have to do a, essentially, a Proposition 218 compliant process to implement a new assessment or new tax to pay for our local cost share. So, that's what that's referring to.
Okay. And we certainly, I know that there's always been an issue between the two federal agencies with regarding the FEMA and the Army Corps of Engineer about, they don't care about FEMA on whether you can get the flood zone situation resolved so that there is something with the insurances. Is there any way we can sort of work that into the system somehow with the consultants making sure that it's evaluated and figured out, or having some communication between the two federal agencies talking to each other? Because ultimately, this is a cost factor to the consumer.
Oh, absolutely. That's going to be very important, and I think all along, Santa Cruz County, Monterey County, and the city of Watsonville have been crystal clear that we will not accept anything less than 100-year level of flood protection for this community. That we're really clear about, we've always been clear about. So, I think, you know, that's, they understand, but we'll make sure that's included as we move forward.
Can we also see that we get the maps redone so that those can be used for the recipients?
That would be very important.
Sooner the better, when this does get resolved, because the sooner they can drop those premiums down, the more disposable income that they have in terms of a resource for them, especially with a lot of households that are very limited already with their incomes or fixed income situations.
Yeah.
So, let's make sure we wrap all that up to help out that part of it. I had just a couple of questions left over. That was a match there. FEMA, community guide for flood risk reduction, can you tell me a little bit more about that? What, is it a booklet that's going to go out to everybody with flood zone? What would be part of that? What would that entail?
So, the community guide would go over the alternatives that are being proposed. It would, you know, we haven't come to agreement with the consultant on the form, but brochure type, and it would be given out to community members so they know what the alternatives are, who the stakeholders are, who the partners working on the project are. So, it just kind of gives its, basically Steve's history packaged into a brochure for them. And MIG has expertise in bilingual, so they're, everything we do is going to be bilingual with them, so there'll be a Spanish one as well.
And this will matriculate down to the consumers that are primarily in this flood zone region?
It's actually, I have asked if MIG would do it in the, you know, as they're going out in the stakeholder meetings, when they do the overall Paharo River meeting, give them out at those meetings. Try to give them out as as many meetings as they can.
And I guess there was a count also in terms of the number of stakeholder meetings that they were discussing in their proposal. I just don't recall how many, a couple of them, a few of them maybe?
I think we agreed upon, because we have to do this, where we had wanted to do this reach-by-reach basis of the river, I think we did three large workshops of the overall project, and then we didn't whittle it down for the reach-by-reach because it's going to depend, the interest level we get at these community meetings where we're going to focus the effort. And then, for the individual 20-person stakeholder meetings, that's still negotiable. We haven't discussed how many that is.
So, the consulting firm's going to wrap up about the end of this year, and we have a three-year limitation. Are we looking at a full resolution in three years after the completion of the consulting work coming through because of the timeline for the funds available? Or are, how, what is our timeline in terms of the point we go through with this today to perhaps a completion?
Yeah, where did I have that? Basically, yeah, we, we have time in our schedule. There it is. So, by the end of this year, we really do hope to have an environment, environmental document out on the street being reviewed, review completed by January 2016. That's the current schedule. And then, from there, a plan would be selected by the community, and it would move forward in the Army Corps process from there. And then, it takes them like another year to finish it. But at least, I mean, the big decision, we probably will be making, you know, at the end of this year. So, it all goes well.
Well, we definitely need to be seeing this progress happen. It's been for, you know, decades now that we've had this chronic problem, and we do need to get the resolution and especially be able to stretch the dollars out on this project that we have already coming to us for it. So, I think we can figure out a 12 and a half million dollar solution on our end.
I would hope so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions? Councilmembers? Anybody from the public want to speak on this issue? Seeing none, bring it back for, is there someone? Come on up.
I'm glad we have public input.
That's good. We like it.
Well, Dr. Lupi Rivas, actually resident of this area and in the flood zone, and my concern is, we've been talking about this forever, and it seems like we haven't really reached any decisions, and we get people excited about something's going to get done, and it doesn't seem to be fast enough. And I'm wondering, is this money to keep the consultants paid for another two or three years? Is basically what we're doing? Or, or we're going to get something out of it? Because I've, I've been here in this area about 15 years, and we've been talking about it and talking about it, and I'm kind of concerned, especially about the, the Army Corps, and they're slow-moving and what has been done so far, and our insurance rates and, and Nancy will attest to it, are going up, and there seems to be no end to it. So, we're already paying really high for being in the flood zones, and if we're going to have to pay again for other protection, I'm concerned. So, whatever gets decided, I hope something is, gets done. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I think we have made some progress with the Bench Excavation Project, but we have not done enough to address the flood insurance rates, and it will take something like this major to do it. I think the Army Corps of Engineers seems to be the ones that we have to work with, and I think it's been, I don't know, how many years? Sam Far has been coming here for numerous meetings. There's been something like $17 million, and no dirt was moved.
Right.
But until the county got involved, and now dirt has been moved, but it's not enough to take care of the flood insurance. I think it's protecting our homes. I think we're, you know, the river's in better shape, the creek's in better shape, but it still doesn't take care of the pocketbook, and people are concerned about the money. So, flood insurance is going to continue to rise. This timeline, you think it's doable?
I think so. I always hope so. I do.
Well, I mean, because, you know, I, I think we all look at it and we say, oh, is this going to happen or, or is it not? And, but I think if somebody's going to make it happen, you can do it, and I think you will do it. And I think the residents need this to happen. They're looking forward to having something happen, more than what has happened already. I, I do commend you. I commend the county and the County of Monterey for what has happened on the river and, and the creek so far. But that, that's a start, and it's great, and I'm glad that somebody decided to do something. Because $17 million and no dirt moved, that's not acceptable. But now, the county and the city's gotten together and something happened. Now, we need to get on to phase, I don't know, two, three, four, whatever this is. And I commend you for taking the steps. I think things will happen, and our residents deserve it. Comments? Yes?
I'll move the motion forward.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on the motion?
Good idea.
Yeah, let's get this moving.
Let's go.
Cervantes?
Yes.
Kaufman-Gomez?
Yes.
Dutra?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Hearst?
Yes.
Yaleses?
Yes. So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And now, to item 10.1, requests and scheduling for any future agenda items. Councilmember Garcia?
I'm not sure if this is a request for an agenda item as much as a request for transparency. Recently, it was published in our newspapers that Watsonville wanted an appeal and was going to be returned over $4 million. And so, there's some thought that, oh, we have an extra $4 million in our general fund. But my understanding is that we still owe the water fund, I think, $3.6 million. And so, just wanting to know how we can get that word out to the community that in fact we don't have an extra $4 million in the general fund.
That's a really good point. So, we will be addressing how this plays into our budget at the mid-year budget review, which is your next council meeting.
Okay.
And we will be explaining how it's a loan that we had gotten from water that we have to pay.
Right.
And it, it saves us from having to set aside $250,000 from the general fund every year for the next 20 years to pay that, but it's not new money.
You're right.
It's just the fact that we don't have to cut anything to find that $250,000. We are a long ways away from getting paid. It will take about five years to get paid. We have to pay the loan back first. So, by the time we get paid the general fund portion that we could do something with, it'll be year five, and we have to wait 60 days for the appeal. And as I mentioned to you earlier, our finance director is still really reluctant to believe we're going to get the money, even if the, if we were found to be on the right side, if the judge found for the city. From there to getting the money, there's a big gap, and so, we're not counting the money. We're just hoping we don't have to pay the water fund any more money. So, yes, it will be covered under mid-year budget, and as you're being contacted to meet on the mid-year budget, to go over it, Eusekia will answer all your questions.
Councilmember Kaufman-Gomez, did you have something?
I do have something, but I believe it's going to be closed session, so I'll just make sure that I email you the request.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hernandez?
I spoke with Marilena from CAB about the program that pays the water bills for folks that can't meet the need, meet the payments, about having a presentation.
Yes.
Okay.
It's on the list.
Okay.
We have, we have been contacted by a lot of groups for presentations, so the mayor's trying to spread them out.
Juggle. There's like about 20 items for the next meeting.
The, the other one was, it, it came up again too with Councilman Rebecca and Jimmy, but I had emailed last year about complaints on Ford and Fifth and Kilburn about, mostly about the garbage day and the cleanup day and parking enforcement.
Okay.
And they said there was, Director Palmasano told me there's a committee that was being formed. He emailed me, there's, there's a committee being formed, and I want to see if there's any update on that.
Sure. I'll find out for you. I know there's a pilot project being put together, but I don't think it's at those addresses. I'll follow up for you.
Any other?
In a second.
Councilmember Dutra?
I just want to say, if we can do what Felipe's talking about, can we get someone to come talk us about, talk to us about parking, garbage, so we can get that off and running? I think it's a really important issue.
Yes. We met with the mayor, I believe, and that the Public Works Department, before this was brought up, had determined to do a pilot project in about eight streets to see how it would work before we reroute all our trucks. And so, that's getting ready to be launched, and so, the pilot project is going to give us the information we need to make it citywide or bigger. Because we have to do one side of the street one day and another side of the street another day, so we have to reroute all our trucks. It's a major undertaking, so we want to test the pilot to see how well it works and what the issues come up are.
Did you pick an area that was well, like parked?
Right around City Hall, Grant, Elm, Union, it's...
Up to Hushbeck. They're going up to Hushbeck. That's the, the, the project, and then it's going to expand. They have to get new signage. There's a lot of things for the street sweeping. But the parking has not... But the parking has not, I've not heard a plan for parking yet.
I, I was going to talk to you when I next met with you.
Okay. Any other items? Okay, any emergency items for the agenda? And then, there are information items in the packet, the report of disbursements and miscellaneous documents. And with that, that concludes our meeting. Thank you very much.
Is one of the things the pilot payout?